Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the City of Kalispell's work session for March twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have a roll call?
Council Dowd.
Here.
Council Delman.
Here.
Council Fisher.
Here.
Council Hunter. Council Nunley. Council Carlson.
Here.
Council Gabriel.
Here.
Council Graham. Mayor Johnson.
And I'm here. Uh, we have one item for discussion this evening that's code enforcement program. So, Mr. Russell, if you want to jumpstart us on this.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, um, as I mentioned last week, this kind of really is our kind of a kickoff to budget discussions. Cause I know how some of the discussion on this will relate to some of our budget preparations. Um, but as you were, you know, we had a lot of discussion on code enforcement, um, earlier this year and several things that popped up. One is matter of, uh, what we had in terms of code enforcement codes and what could be improved on. We did change one, uh, previously, uh, this year as it related to egress and ingress of structures. But at the time I said there were other, uh, portions of our code that could be updated to make them, uh, a little bit more easy to implement. And then also a discussion of the resources related to it. So I think what I'll start tonight is just walk through two of the ordinances we have in place and our recommended changes of those. Um, there were some additional ordinances that were requested to be presented. So those are on here with the vacant buildings and, uh, dangerous structures. Um, if council wants to go further with that, you know, we're happy to discuss those, but we didn't prepare sample Kalispell ordinances. Just brought those up, um, because they were requested to be discussed. And then I'll talk about a little bit about the resources related to it, to code enforcement. So first off, the two ordinances we want to talk about is community decay and junk vehicle. And those are primarily what we received the most and some of the biggest, uh, kind of nebulous within the codes to actually, uh, put into place. So do have, these are our current codes, uh, for community decay. And what we've done with this one is just made some modification, especially to the abatement process. And then also, uh, bringing, uh, weed and grasses into community decay versus under the fire code. So just walk through this really quick. Let's say we added in the wording on unchecked or overgrown vegetation. That'll also be included a little bit later on.
Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the City of Kalispell's work session for March twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have a roll call?
Council Dowd.
Here.
Council Delman.
Here.
Council Fisher.
Here.
Council Hunter. Council Nunley. Council Carlson.
Here.
Council Gabriel.
Here.
Council Graham. Mayor Johnson.
And I'm here. Uh, we have one item for discussion this evening. It's code enforcement program. So, Mr. Russell, if you want to jumpstart us on this.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, um, as I mentioned last week, this kind of really is our kind of a kickoff to budget discussions. Cause I know how some of the discussion on this will relate to some of our budget preparations. Um, but as you were aware, you know, we had a lot of discussion on code enforcement, um, earlier this year. And, uh, several things that popped up, one is a matter of, uh, what we had in terms of code enforcement codes and what could be improved on. We did change one, uh, previously, uh, this year as it related to egress and ingress of structures. But at the time I said there were other, uh, portions of our code that could be updated to make them, uh, a little bit more easy to implement. And then also a discussion of the resources related to it. So I think what I'll start tonight is just walk through two of the ordinances we have in place and our recommended changes of those. Um, there were some additional ordinances that were requested to be, uh, presented. So those are on here with the vacant buildings and, uh, dangerous structures. Um, if council wants to go further with that, you know, we're happy to discuss those, but we didn't prepare sample Kalispell ordinances. Just brought those up, um, because they were requested to be discussed. And then I'll talk about a little bit about the resources related to it, to code enforcement. So first off, the two ordinances we want to talk about is community decay and junk vehicle. And those are primarily what we received the most and some of the biggest, uh, kind of nebulous within the codes to actually, uh, put into place. So do have, these are our current codes, uh, for community decay. And what we've done with this one is just made some modification, especially to the abatement process. And then also, uh, bringing, uh, weed and grasses into community decay versus under the fire code. So just walk through this really quick. Let's say we added in the wording on unchecked or overgrown vegetation. That'll also be included a little bit later on. So basically moving abatement into a much more streamlined process, at least we're, uh, recommending it. Really instead of, uh, kind of multiple notifications and lengthy notifications, looking at a ten day notification, uh, for a violation. Then following that, um, if it hasn't been abated, follow up with a civil infraction. Now that would be a twenty-one day period, I believe, to appear, if I'm correct. So you're still looking at a thirty-one day timeframe before it gets to the court for them to actually rule upon. But it is much quicker than our current process and much more streamlined. So the underlying portions are there are the recommended changes and obviously the strikeout would be the striking out portion. Further on down, talks a little bit about, uh, weed and grass. Whoops, maybe it's up. Currently, uh, weed and grass is under fire code and it's after July first. Um, and it is anything over eight inches. Uh, we're recommending keeping that eight inches in, um, but removing the date of July first from it. And that way, cause again, if previously, um, again, you were looking at if it's after the first of July. And you had, A, and it usually was multiple letters and then any type of abatement go to court. Usually by that time you're almost done with summer and you're into fall and it's really not a fire hazard at that point. Move into community decay is really kind of captures the complaints we get. The complaints we get aren't for fear of fire hazard is because of, uh, overgrown, um, lawns, et cetera. So the recommendation would be to us to remove that date of July first and really any weeds or grasses over eight inches. Do have some exceptions because we still do have some ag properties. So anything over fifteen thousand square feet would be exempted. Other areas that would be, uh, um, hillsides, wetlands, uh, areas that are inaccessible or impractical for mowing would be exempted as well. So those are the changes we'd recommend within community decay. I guess I'd happy to answer any questions if anyone has any before we turn it over for discussion after we get through the rest of it. Okay. Other changes would be in the junk vehicle ordinance. So what we did with this one is, is looked at language from other municipalities and took a lot from the City of Great Falls on this one. And it really provides a lot more of a framework for, uh, enforcing, um, junk vehicles. Really, this was the wording of our previous, or our current ordinance. Really doesn't capture a lot of the complaints we get. So added in a larger definition to include discarded, ruined, wrecked, dismantled motor vehicles, machinery, trailers or parts thereof. Uh, they're including component parts inoperative or inoperative or incapable of being driven, which has any one of the following characteristics. And you can see, um, really just further definition of where those, uh, might be at. One thing we did remove from the Great Falls language is their junk vehicles included vehicles that weren't currently registered. It's a common, uh, component that a lot of municipalities have. We're happy to put that back in, but just that'd be more up for council discussion. We thought there's probably a lot of, a lot of cars, um, that are perfectly operable, but just may not be registered for a variety of reasons. And if they fell into the other definition, then they'd still be able to be acted upon, registered or not registered. And then again, looking at the same process with a ten day abatement period. And then if there's a failure to abate, then follow that up with a, a citation, a civil citation in the court. Again, you have an exemption for work that's active going on, I think that has a program. Cause you know, some of the question, well, we don't program. Cause you know, some of the question, well, we don't want to be going around enforcing people's yards. Well, we still do that. We just don't do it very effectively or efficiently because we don't have dedicated resources. And when you look at the wide breadth of areas that would fall under code enforcement, you know, these are things that pop up, you know, intermittently throughout the year. And usually when we address them, we address them as time permits in various departments throughout the city. Some are under public works, some are in parks, some are in, uh, planning and zoning. So you just don't have that consistency. They're under different, uh, regulations. And, and one of the big things that we see is, uh, they don't get followed up on. You know, we'll go there, we'll make contact, if it gets abated, great. That same could end up there the next week and we're not going unless we get a call on it again, which becomes very frustrating for the landowners. And moreover, in terms of things even like anytime we send out letters, you know, you have to go and you do follow up things. But if you don't have dedicated personnel, you're pulling people away. You may be pulling a planner away from their duties for that day to go up and follow on five to ten weed letters that have come out. Or, you know, junk vehicle complaints or things of that nature. And when I, you know, provide the information from the other cities, I know Missoula specifically is complaint only. So they have, you know, six personnel for a complaint only department. So complaints do come in and in terms of, you know, the size of the other departments, it's just representative of, of what they get. So in terms of if you want to have effective, efficient code enforcement, just like any other service delivery we provide, you know, we're bringing that for council. What's the service level you want? Because it's hard for us to say, well, you know, we'll get to it and it's on the list, but we've have to work it into our work schedule and our work product. And that's one of those challenges. And then the big problem is the follow up on them, you know, after it gets abated once, it may be there the next week. You know, it may just go immediately back to that. If you had someone dedicated, you know, they could follow that through for a period of time to ensure that that abatement has, has come through with that. So really what we're looking for here is, you know, what does council want for your level of service deliveries that relates to code enforcement? We can continue on working it into the program as we get, really stopping the process and let's just follow up complaints. Or we can implement a dedicated personnel to really monitor and have a much more effective program. You know, some of the opportunities for implementation, if council wants to go that way is, one, we can work it just straight into the budget, uh, within general fund monies. But if you want a little more, uh, assurance that that's what the community wants, you can set up a special district and put it out for a vote to the public. You can do it with a nominal mill levy, you know, if you want to do with a one mill levy, uh, uh, one mill. So it's a very nominal fee and whatever that doesn't generate gets put back. But what it'd be doing is it'd be testing the gauge of the community. Do you want a dedicated code enforcement program in Kalispell? You can do that, you can do the same thing with, uh, you know, that'd be a special district you could create. You could do it with a, a vote for a dedicated mill levy, like we did a fire EMS. Or again, just put it through the general fund. So there's different options for council depending on what your thoughts are, if you want to gauge the, you know, the feel of the community. But again, it really comes down to like most of our budget discussions of what is the level of service council wants to see for these complaints that come in. And so with that, happy to answer any questions you may have related to it.
Doug, has that been done in the past where it's been put to the public for a vote?
Well, we have special assessment districts, you know.
But I mean, something this specific?
Well, um. Not maybe at this level. You know, the fire and EMS levy was put to the public as a, you know, a dedicated levy. And again, I have the same question, what is the level of service the community wants? It was just a much higher, you know, threshold. This would be just kind of gauging the community's component of, do you want more services dedicated to code enforcement?
Thank you. So on the three years that I've been here, um, you know, we've seen, there was someone that came forward about like a house on teal. And then there's been a couple of cars. And of course the big one was the outlaw. I mean, we don't know what comes in. Do we have like numbers on how many complaints we get about, you know, the community decay or the vehicles? And then for the two ordinances that you have, the community decay and the junk vehicles, does a code officer preclude changing those ordinances?
Uh, no, it doesn't. And I say those would be easier, but you know, it's still going to put a stress on resources. Cause now, um, after that ten day, if we ever issue any of those citations, that's moving that person into court for that time period. So you're taking them away from their normal course of duties. In terms of complaints that we get in, I, I know you've all seen snow removal on sidewalks. You know, those come in, the weed ones come in. And no, you don't see them all because they come into there. And, you know, one thing that I would say is if you have a dedicated program, we will get more calls. You know, it's kind of understood that there's not a whole lot of enforcement of city codes across the community.
And would a code enforcement program or officer, um, preclude like the, um, like the ordinance, the example ordinances that you had from billings? Like if we were to adopt something like that, would we have to have a code officer before we could do something like that?
Again, I'd say it goes back to the same thing with all the others. If you want an effective program, you need to put more resources to it. You could, you could implement those and we could stumble through a program, but it's not going to be, they just take time. Especially dangerous, uh, ordinance, you're looking at a lot of time for one's structure that you may have to look at. Same thing, you're creating a registry for vacant buildings if council wants to go that route, which you're going to have to have someone manage it.
Do we know, okay, so would we do like a full-time position and what would be the budgetary constraints?
A full-time position.
And how would this affect our budget from the general fund?
Well, we'd work it into a, into the budget. I mean, you're looking at the cost of one FTE, they'd be under development services. And again, the budget is dependent on whether or not you want to work in the general fund, if you want to look at a special district. Just depends on where council would want to go.
And total cost of that, they'd need a vehicle, they need, you are one hundred percent right. There's going to be a certain amount of downtime in court and expenses with that. What would this program cost to implement?
So one, you're going to look at a, a full-time FTE. You're right on the, on the cars can appreciate over five years, you know, quite frankly, just for that initial personnel, you know, with all benefits included. Just ballparking it seventy-five, eighty thousand?
Just a few comments. I appreciate the vehicles not registered being taken out. A lot of people, if they have a collector, they just leave it sitting there. They don't drive them, they're, they could be sitting outside and not a big deal. The community decay on the weeds, you worked hard when I was with the county and having the county help you with some of these things. Because the Kalispell proper is within the county. If you have somebody complaining about weeds over and over, can you call the county and have them send the enforcement letter on the weeds?
If they're noxious.
Exactly.
Yeah, but you know, this would be anything over eight inches. It's, it's, we specifically didn't refer to noxious weeds in there because of that reason. Because if we do get noxious weeds, that'd fall under the jurisdiction of the county.
But like field bindweed will never reach eight inches. It grows at two inches and can be a heck of a problem on the west side, but never gets to eight inches. It's just a low level.
Yeah, any, any, any calls we get related to noxious weeds, we send over to the county.
Okay. And then this dedicated mill levy to a vote, um, the request would be what you run for numbers, seventy-five, eighty thousand, let the community speak.
Yeah, again, I, that's more of just if council wants to get the gauge where the community's at. You know, it's more of a vote to say, do you want code enforcement in the City of Kalispell? I, I'd just put, you know, about a one mill on it that it's not going to take care of it, especially if we start getting a lot more calls, which I would anticipate we would. Um, because if people see responding and see changes in there, we're likely to get more. So in the future, you know, it's going to take, you know, potentially more time. As you can see, other municipalities are dealing with a lot more personnel than we are. And not only are you going to have that, but attorney time into it as well as it goes in front of municipal court. So that would increase over time. Again, I, I could be able to absorb it into the general fund. I, I put the vote in the special district out there just as an option if council wants to see what the public feels.
And how much will that cost us?
Well, I'd go on the, I'd recommend just putting it on the general election, which we're already paying for this upcoming general election.
Okay. I mean, for me, I'm, I'm not super keen on it. I would prefer to see what City of Kalispell wants from this, their level of service requests. Like I'm, I'm just not super keen on it.
What's the estimate of, um, man hours per month that you spend on code enforcement issues?
Again, we work them in when we have time, to be quite honest. I, I would probably put it right now, maybe, I don't know, PJ, you know, ten hours on a very limited response.
Yeah, it can really vary and you know, our department does, um, you know, the tall weeds and grass, community decay, junk vehicle. And it's always a lot busier in the summer, so it really depends upon the time of year. You know, years that I did that, we had as many as like sixty weed complaints. And it usually involved basically an afternoon every week, driving around, writing the letters, getting them sent off and then doing follow-up visits. So, and that's just our slice of it. Like, um, Doug had mentioned, there's other departments looking at sidewalk issues or encroachment issues as well, so.
You know, as it gets into some of the things like, uh, you know, other programs I've been associated with, you do proactive time in the winter on education for snow removal on city sidewalks. And you would implement a stronger education program to ideally get that information proactively out there prior to any type of enforcement component. So there'd be time that you put that individual to work, uh, without even being proactive on violations. But in education and then work within, uh, the development services plan, park plan itself, themselves, departments.
So, Mayor, like the teal drive that Jessica mentioned and the other, um, thing by my house with vehicles and, and junk. That's being covered currently under planning, those bigger ones that we've had complaints about.
Yeah, but again, with those, some of the problems have been repeat abatements. And this would still go under development services, they'd still be where they're at. But like I say, a lot of those, one, I think tightening up the ordinances would be good for all of those. But really it's, a lot of those are just the follow-up on properties. Because what we see is just enough to come into compliance and then a couple of weeks later it just slides back down, but we're not going back.
Uh, I guess, I've thought a lot about this because I am a fan of certain things in this, but I just don't think the stomach is there for the residents to do a full-time position dedicated to this with the calls that we, we get. Um, I, I think you do a pretty good job of the big things. I think we're looking at a few examples, like the outlaw and the buildings that kind of stand out. It's just hard to justify a hundred thousand, it'll grow to a hundred and fifty thousand in five years of, of this. When really people just need to educate themselves on things like noxious weeds. And if you have a junk vehicle there, um, it's time to clean it up at a certain point. I just think there's a lot of public education that can be done that could save a lot of money. And what would this person do if there's only ten or fifteen, like you say, it will grow. The monster will grow if, if people know they have a, a ability to complain. But i- if there's only twenty calls in a week and you have a full-time position, where would that person float to and what good could they do the taxpayers?
So, so in South Dakota, we implemented a position that wasn't there. And same thing in Kansas and a lot of education, what you're talking about. Again, education takes time as well.
Yes, sir.
So that's what a lot of time was focused on. You know, just for example, in, in South Dakota, and we did there, um, really probably spent a significant amount of time education on the junk vehicles. What is a junk vehicle? What are some of your options for removal? What services are there provided? And spent a lot of time proactively getting that education out there and working in that. Uh, the same thing on weeds and, you know, community decay type things. So really a lot of the focus would be on education. That's where a lot of the time would come if there's not getting calls to go out and, and do that inspections.
And that junk vehicle thing, and Mr. Mayor, you can probably answer this too. The county already does a lot and that applies to the city as well. That's countywide for them to pick up junk vehicles when they do their big push in the spring, correct?
Yeah, I believe that if there's a countywide program, typically.
Unless it's an abandoned camper, then we have to drag it out to the county for the dump to take it. Something I complain to the landfill about when I'm on the board, so. Otherwise it's on city streets, it's our responsibility. If it's out on a county road, the landfill picks it up.
Well, how do y'all feel about testing the waters?
I, I have a huge amount to say about all of this, but I'm just kind of waiting for everybody else to have their.
Speak.
I'm just waiting for the libertarian to say, hey, step back and look at your own property like your neighbors do.
I'm just, I'm looking at this graph of, uh, the cities and how many personnel that they have. Uh, and I see like, you know, on the Kalispell, like, I don't know, this is just an analogy, but like freedom. Billings, huge wasteful government spending. Missoula, the same thing. Uh, Great Falls, to a better degree, they have one, uh, and so on. You know, we, we get, we get, we get some complaints and I'm sure it's a mix between the summer and the winter. Winter probably is a whole bunch of snow complaints, right? But you know, the, the, the big thing on my mind right now is we have been nickel and dime in the public for a while. Uh, the cost of water has gone way up because of the requirements that we have to meet with water. The, uh, cost of, you know, the, just the, their, uh, the mills, we, we haven't really raised the mills, but the mill range went up, right? So that more money for, for the taxpayer. Um, I'm, you know, at this, this budget season, I'm really wanting to look at what can we cut instead of what can we add, right? And, um, I can tell you that the public seems, from my point of view, to be really sick of us coming to them with levies. Now, I'm not saying that this would be a big cost, it'd probably be very small per, per household, but, uh, it's just one, another, you know, nickel in the pot, right? So that's one, one aspect of this. If I want to dig into the ordinances that you proposed, I have a little bit of concern about the junk vehicle one. Because, um, like in the winter, I have a, a vehicle that we don't use in the winter. So I take the battery out and I put it in the garage. Technically right there, it's a junk vehicle because it doesn't have a battery in it. Um, if, if somebody were to be working on their car anywhere except for like inside of their garage, uh, that's technically a junk vehicle. As soon as they take away a, a single part that makes it non-operable, even if it's for a short amount of time. And, you know, I, I don't know if we want to get into like going to a house and saying, you know, when did you start the repair on this thing? When are you going to finish? Uh, it's, it's just a little bit, um, it just sounds a little bit, uh, too much, I guess. Uh, I do like the other parts of it, right? I would definitely not put the registration in there, that's the state's responsibility. I don't care if anybody registers their car, that's on the state. Let's see what else. The, I, I think putting the weeds under, um, uh, you know, taking them out from under the fire department is a good idea. Like the ordinance that we just passed, I think we need to rescind and put it in the right place, right? Um, so I'm, I'm okay with that. Um, so I'm I'm okay with that. I had other things to say about code enforcement, but but really, right now, I'm just looking at the budget. And, um, I would want to figure out what full-time city position we're going to cut in order to put this guy in or this person in, um, just so that we're, we stay neutral at least. At, you know, that's my hope is we can at least stay neutral this year. So, um, that's, those are my initial thoughts on this, so I'll let somebody else talk.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I agree with, uh, what Mr. Dowd said about going, going for a levy right now. I I think the public's been pretty clear that they're, they're not really keen on supporting them right now. However, I think we have an issue that needs to be addressed. And what I might suggest would be that we monitor it for this year and track the complaints we get so we have data. And then we, if we decide that, okay, we want to add this position next year, then we at least have the data to present saying we got X number of complaints, this is what the complaints were. It could be a simple spreadsheet, um, to just kind of keep track of that stuff. Because I I think there is a need, I think Mr. Russell's absolutely right. If there's no teeth to the ordinance, what's the point of having it? It it's a joke. So I think we have to decide, okay, we're going to look at it again in a year. But before we do that, we need to know how many calls we actually get. That's my two cents. And I I wanted to clarify what, um, PJ said. Did you say in the summer, you might get fifty to sixty cases a month? Is that right?
So I, a lot of the code enforcement fell on me for a number of years. So we did, we did have a full-time one for three years back like two thousand seven to nine, that was a little bit more proactive. I would say that, yeah, we we generally got about sixty just weed and grass complaints. Probably fifteen or so, community decay, junk vehicle type of complaints.
And that was just the summer?
And that was just in the summer because usually, I mean, obviously, in the winter, you don't have the weeds and grass. And usually, people start coming out of the house and see that a little bit more about this time of year. So what our department dealt with was more of a summer type of program with complaint basis. You know, other departments with snow on sidewalks and other things, there's certainly things all year round that could be, could be hit.
And that was separate from what fire was doing when they were overseeing like safety type things, correct?
Fire still does that.
But that's, that was a completely separate thing, what you're talking about, that wasn't tied in with that, right?
So the only thing we did relating to fire was the tall weeds and grass because it fell into that fire code and it was deemed to be a fire hazard, so.
Okay, thank you.
Either one of you go.
Go ahead, Jed.
Fight it out.
I tend to agree with Carrie. I I I agree with Sid as well, taxpayers are just not going to, I I can't imagine even putting this on with everything that we've had to face and deal with. I do appreciate all the work and looking into what other, um, cities are doing. But i- i- it seems worthy to track it a year. I I get the summertime being busier and the wintertime, we're probably most the problem with our snow removal going out onto a sidewalk if we're plowing and it ends up on a sidewalk, especially in front of a business or s- city streets, more so than residential. But, um, I I would be a fan of tracking for a year, get some real numbers, see if this is a seasonal, six-month position or nothing at all. Um, I get that too, I, people don't like heavy-handed, um, from government. But at the same time, I get calls from business owners, I think you do too, Mayor, down on the south side. The sidewalks, they aren't swept off, it's a danger for people when there's gravel on the sidewalks. Weeds with adjoining neighbors within the city of Kalispell. I mean, I know you hear it all, but some would definitely like to see it. I just don't know if the percentages are there to justify a hundred K expenses. Um, but I would like to see some harder tracking numbers of the timeframes that come in. A simple log sheet, not a lot of time into it to kind of have a better idea what to evaluate in the future.
So, uh, the the thing that I was thinking about, uh, pretty much all week when I knew this was coming up, was kind of the event that spurred this, the the outlaw, right? And we probably would have been able to assess them more fines if we had a dedicated, um, person to do that. But it wouldn't have changed a thing because that developer lost the funding, they were underwater, they couldn't even pay the taxes on the place. So nothing that we did, e- even if we just stacked, you know, uh, violations on them, would would have made a difference in that at all. Especially since the developer was out of town and wasn't seeing the outrage of the citizens here. And, you know, there there's probably some things that we could do to tighten that up a little bit. But, um, i- in those most extreme cases with the big, uh, bigger buildings and developments, uh, I think it's still going to be a problem to try to enforce that if the, if the developer just doesn't have funding or whatever. But they are still liable for everything that happens on their property, right? So it's it's not like, um, if somebody gets hurt on their property or whatever, it just, oh, well, nothing's going to happen. It's still on them, uh, you know, legally to to make sure that their area is safe. It would probably, these other two codes for the, the, um, the weeds and grass and the junk vehicles would have probably made those other two instances we were talking about easier to deal with. So for for those kind of issues where they're habitual, uh, I think that is, uh, it's a good thing to bring the, all the code under one, uh, you know, u- under one area instead of having different departments be, uh, like the fire department for this, the planning department for this, right?
Without a dedicated program, we're not bringing them all under one. Because that's just not, that's just not fair to the, to development services to move all of the stuff that's currently managed by Public Works or Parks under one. It's just, i- it would overwhelm them.
So so you would suggest that we don't do these recommendations?
No, 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 no. So there's a whole list of things of code enforcement in there. They are spread out throughout the organization. That's one of the problems is it's just scattered through there. The community decay and junk vehicles are currently under development services, they would stay there. I'd still recommend moving forward with those recommended changes because it would make it more streamlined of a process. And so I would still go forward with that. But it's not bringing everything under development services, just those two, which currently are under development services right now.
And and they probably count for the majority of the summertime complaints, I'm guessing.
A lot of the weeds, but, you know, it just depends. And depending what, some, you know, we've had landscaping issues that have taken lots of time. We've had, you know, a wide variety of circumstances come up. And and this isn't just the first year that's been brought up. We had one council member that brought it up every budget year to have a code enforcement officer. So this isn't anything new. But the discussion here is exactly what we're looking for. What is the service level? Because that's the policy decision and everything comes off that level. And and what I'm hearing is that there's not a whole lot of, uh, flavor for moving forward with a dedicated officer. And that's fine, we can continue on as we have. I would still recommend we look at those two ordinances that we currently have on the books and tightening them up, if council's good with that. And if so, we we can come back with, uh, those recommendations to codify without, uh, you know, dedicated. There'll still be times when things just don't get taken care of, just to be honest, because we don't have the resources and time. And what I would fear is if any of those are a court case that gets dropped because our personnel are are booked up somewhere else. And when that court case gets assigned, that is a possibility that could occur. But that is what happens. We'd still be better off with making those changes anyway, because it would streamline those. And you'd have that, you know, one letter and then a citation issued for municipal court.
And I just want to clarify something on the outlaw real quick. If we had had codes in place that we could have addressed on the outlaw, we would have taken them to court for abatement. And if we had the cost of abatement or or the city had abated and we had found in a judgment, the cost of abatement for the city potentially could have had a judgment lien on the property. So I just want to clarify that despite the developer being underwater and the other issues with it, there was a possibility of a court procedure had we had those codes. Does that make sense?
Yes, we could have done a.
And the other thing, I I'd say, uh, council member, is you talked about if a car's under work, there's an exemption for that. A sixty-day exemption for a car that's currently under work. So that would be worked out between the owner and, uh, code enforcement.
What, was that under the exemptions part or was it with the junk vehicle piece?
It's under junk vehicles.
I would note too, that allows for shielding in those situations, so you can potentially exceed those sixty days. Like you said, if it was in a garage or if it was in a backyard behind a a view obscuring fence. So there there are exemptions and ways of being able to work on on vehicles in those situations, as long as it's not out for public view.
I I appreciate, uh, clarification on that because I I did not see those.
Yep, nope, not a problem. So I I guess where I'm looking at, I I think I've got enough guidance to go on, is, um, status quo in terms of resources, but making the changes to those two ordinances that are currently in place, just making them a little bit more streamlined and effective.
And a report by next year, as Carrie mentioned, just to see how many dissatisfied people we have that we don't get to. They deserve better, um, but I get staff issues. But I'd like to see how many things that we actually don't respond to because it's very important to them and their neighborhood. It would be nice to have that report of what we are missing. And it's fully understandable, but it would be nice to see that.
And I'd say too, Jed, that the complaints you and I got, it's always good if I walk in or you walk in and talk to that neighboring business owner and say, hey, got someone kind of complaining.
Exactly.
Tends to carry a heck of a lot more weight than a phone call from a code compliance officer or anyone from the, there's more not, it's just.
Totally agree with you. Write down to weeds for the neighbor to go over and say, hey, you know, I really fight hard to keep my yard looking nice. Would you, I'm concerned about fire, I'm concerned about the weeds, I'm concerned about whatever. Just that does a lot better than heavy-handed government, agree with you.
It's really embarrassing if you just pull up and mow their lawn.
It's out of scope for a council member to trespass on someone's yard and mow it. I'd recommend you don't do that.
Knock on the door and get permission, it's just embarrassing, I'm here to mow your lawn.
Again, thank you for all the work and what you came up with, Doug.
Anything else, though?
The only thing else I have under management reports would be, uh, no meeting next week, it's the fifth Monday.
Okay, any public comment?
Happy spring, you all may know me by now, I'm Kyle, I, uh, live over off of Fourth here. And, uh, I have a few concerns with this. And I agree with it, I disagree with it in different aspects and want to open some dialogue. I think you guys had some great dialogues, Sid brought up some great points. And my problem is that this is going to go to the extreme. And Sid's right, it's another government overreach, it's another way to make money, it's another way to tax taxpayers somehow. And I'm going to go off off of it a little bit because I had a conversation actually two days ago with a neighbor about this upcoming levy, uh, which I'm for supporting the schools and saving the ag program. But he says, you know, we moved in this house fourteen years ago and we bought the house that we could afford and that we could pay the tax on, and we could pay the water bill, we could pay the electricity and the gas. And today, for somebody who's over sixty-five and goes, well, I'm retired, I live off my retirement and social security. And they're going, we're making every cut we can, but they keep raising everything from schools to water to, you know, road costs. And as we all know, how inflation works, it goes up and down. Yeah, we're at a high point, people want to get paid twenty-five bucks an hour to sit in a truck all day. But in five years, that'll come down, hopefully. And, uh, the problem I have mainly to this is you're going to spend more money that could be allocated for fixing our roads, working with our schools. You know, when when, put that money into reviewing new infrastructure as well. I assume this would cover the, uh, vision triangle enforcement. As Gene loves his vision triangles, uh, they do, they do prevent wrecks. Uh, but I invite you to go over to Fifth Ave where they just built that new Flathead Industries building. Because I go through there back and forth to the auto parts store all the time. And you cannot see one bit around that corner. It doesn't matter if you're driving a truck, small car, it doesn't matter. You cannot see incoming traffic coming down Fifth, coming off, uh, I think it's First Ave there. Or First Street, I believe, wherever that back road is. And, uh, so obviously, they didn't follow the vision triangle on that one. But the city just recently approved it and it got built pretty damn quick. So my question is, you put this into enforcement. Well, are you going to go to the extreme? Or are you going to say, hey, we're just going to worry about, you know, people mowing their lawns, be sure the sidewalks are shoveled, you know, abandoned vehicles on the street, which I think is pretty well taken care of for the most part. But where I run into an issue is fences, the rightaways. And here's the deal with that, and I've had the city and I've I've battled them and I won. So they say, well, you're, you know, fence is in the right way, your neighbor's fence is in the right way. Okay, well, now you put this into effect and now the money's, now the city is spending money to go to court and all this BS. When that's a, that fence could have been there in nineteen eighty, which most of them were there, especially on the west side, were there since the, you know, nineteen hundreds. You know, early two thousands. And you're not the state, you probably don't look at state law very often, I tend to look at it ever so often. But state law says that a fence that's in place for more than four years is considered a legal boundary. Where do you draw the line? Seriously, where do you draw the line? Are you going to send somebody fines and spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to fight it and make somebody's life miserable? It's not worth it. If it's not harming anyone, it's not worth it, right? Like Sid said, with the abandoned cars, I a hundred percent get it. I run a business, I have vehicles, I have trailers, I have equipment all the time, moving around. Shit, my neighbors don't know what's mine half the time, you know? I tend to keep a tidy yard, I don't like craps in and out, so I try to keep it, you know, somewhat contained in a little corner. But, you know, every once in a while, you have a a piece of equipment or something that goes down and you pull it up into your parking area and it sits there for a little bit. Well, now I'm going to go get a fine because I do my own shit on my own property? That's where I have a problem with this. So I think you guys brought up perfect dialogue for it. And they've been fighting it for years, I know over ten years ago, uh, fifteen years ago, actually, there was a gentleman down here that had put up some sort of barrier coming off the alleyway. And the trash truck said, well, we can't make the corner. The guy says, well, stop going over my lawn. And Gene finally gave up and said, yeah, let it be, it's not harming anything. The truck's got to back up two feet or make a wider turn. Was it worth the hassle to go after the guy? No, he just didn't want the trash trucks driving or anybody cutting the corner driving over his lawn. I don't blame him, I like to keep my yard as nice as possible. So that's my two cents, I think it's a big waste of money. I I understand it to a point, but, I mean, really, how far extreme do you go? If you look down here and first, I do the VFW, I clear the VFW, I go curb to, or building the curb. But the guy next to me follows two foot, you know, three-foot pathway to shovel around their sidewalk. It's like, okay, well, you think that person would be embarrassed and shovel the whole sidewalk like everybody else, but they don't. Is it that big a deal? No. Okay, then maybe say something, you know? Say, hey, we'd like you to shovel the whole sidewalk, we get it's a lot, which it is a lot, I do it. But, you know, it's where do you draw that line? So that's my two cents, uh, not on this topic. But I'm going to touch on the the levy for you guys, just to put something in your mind. And because it's kind of a work session, um, so you guys can take it home and think about it. I support those levy, I want to support the high school kids, it needs to be done, unfortunately. Um, I don't want higher taxes, but it it's, it's one of the few things that I'm going to say, hey, we got to keep our schools going. But that falls back on you guys in this room. Because when I was in here for the Tronstad thing, it was very specifically mentioned that you cannot decide whether you're going to at homes based on the schools. Well, guess what? The state gives money. The state gives money for each student that's in a school. In the high schools, that's gone down 100 kids that year. That's estimated $800,000 out of their pocket. The other 20% cap out of the 80% that the state gives you comes locally. And that's why you have the levies and, and, and bonds to build the buildings, which I'm sure you're all aware about. The issue is, is that as this, you guys allow the city to grow and mass put people in, which the county doesn't allow, you have more kids, which requires more teachers, more administrators and more cleaning people. Something that the school system can't support. So before you go and approve another subdivision, which have been, I think, about three or five, three to five of them in the last year and a half, think about that. Because it's putting a starvation effect into our school systems. And like I said, I'm not for more taxes. I'm always for less government and less taxes. I preach that till the day I die. But we got to be smart here and look at the big picture. And like Sid said, you keep nickel and diming everyone and wanting more and more money. Well, that, things will eventually go down. I mean, I held out as, I've held out pretty well as a business owner to hold out through this time. You know, as a taxpayer, I asked the city to do the same, so. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Here's online. Really?
Jamie, you can unmute and talk.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Jamie Quinn, 729 Sixth Ave, West Kalispell. I'm going to go against everybody, but I'm in favor of looking into code enforcement for the community. I'm very intrigued by a council that is so pro-tourism, which I don't personally agree with. But this is exactly a tourism-based policy then that you should be implementing. Because if you want to build a hotel or give property to developers to build a hotel, if you want businesses to go in downtown, then we do need to have a community that looks appropriate when you're coming in. And frankly, the way that you come into this community, if you're coming through and seeing the outlaw, it's not great. And you could have had a tax levy or, or on that property, as was mentioned by the attorney. So there are ways to go about this. I think that, you know, you, a couple of years ago, decided that it wasn't important to turn around and do design standards on the Parkline Trail. That probably could have impacted some of those issues around the building that the previous gentleman was mentioning around Flathead Industries. But again, those are things that you decided not to do because the developers would do what's best for the community, which I think outlaw is a pretty prime example of the fact that that's not what's going to happen. I also agree that, you know, the, the vehicles outside, there's more that are out there that need to be addressed. And also, I almost want to say that this should be taken a step further into looking at rental properties because there's a lot of unsafe rental properties in our community. And while I don't want to see people displaced, I also don't want to see somebody die because there's no egress windows in a basement that somebody's renting out or other things. You know, I used to work in a community where we worked with code enforcement and provided direct services for individuals. It was the best way to catch especially some of our seniors that really needed more wraparound services and could not take care of themselves at home, get placement and get support because they had nobody in their lives that were, you know, taking care of it and their bills were on auto pay or they have a rep payee and nobody's actually checking on that person. Where a lot of times, things can get caught through code enforcement. But again, it also just makes people that are renting more safe. Because I know that I used to live in an ADU property where we were, but a lot of the other properties and spaces there would definitely have never been approved for people to live in them. So I think that there's a bunch of different reasons. And I know that this isn't a reason for you, but it's pretty obvious if every other city in the state has code enforcement and every other civilized community basically in this country has code enforcement, that maybe it's something we should really address. It's not an over-government. It's called keeping people safe. And again, you want this to be a tourist community, then turn around and invest in a tourist community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Seen none? Anything from council?
We talked at one point about possibly talking about a cell phone or distracted driving ordinance. And I saw a thing in the paper that apparently the state is looking at something again. And so I think Libby was discussing it. So if, if nothing is passed on a statewide level, can we relook at talking about that? And if not, maybe it'll take care of itself. Thank you. I didn't, I didn't realize that was happening this year, so.
Seems to have support.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, I, I just thought of something when she was talking about that unrelated. There was a bill up in the, in the legislature that would affect this year's elections. They, they're trying to move city council elections to
General.
General election years. Does anybody know if that passed? Because that, what was written into it when I read it was it goes into effect immediately and would affect this year's election.
Not sure what bill number.
Yeah, I'll try to research it.
If that got through, transmitted or not.
Yeah, I'll try to reach it. I know, I know it got to committee, so that would heavily affect us this year. We would have to figure out what we're going to do for the next year if we have people that are over, over term, right? So anyway, that's something I, I wanted to, to bring up and put on our radar.
Yeah, I think if it did make it through, I think that the transition had existing seats going on another year.
The governor will never sign it. He wants to get rid of me.
That was it. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, that, we're adjourned.